Recording in progress.
And it really worked. I should have been using it a lot more often. Then then I'm getting a kick out of our mayor elect. He's out there working the crowd. Meanwhile. Meanwhile, the retiree sitting here is going, come on, let's get this meeting over with. No, it's absolutely delightful to invite you to and welcome you to our city council meeting. Really special night for a wide variety of reasons. But before we actually call the meeting to order, we're going to do the formality that we need to do. With respect to how this meeting is run, because we still have remnants. Leftover from sheltering in place. And hybrid meetings because there are little people online right now, but I think as of February. They were all supposed to be back in person, as I remember. Cross our fingers and as we see this COVID surge hitting especially in LA. So we'll cross our fingers. Anyway, I tend to want to tell stories, so I'll stop. Clementine, would you tell folks who are online, especially how they can participate in our meeting?
Certainly, for those of us in person, we remind you that masks are required. Regardless of vaccination status, except if you are younger than two or have a medical condition. That prevents wearing a mask and please keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference. For joining us on Zoom, you may use the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call in by telephone. You can use the link or phone number on the agenda at icertchmonterey.org. An up to date version of Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll free eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Then enter meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And if you're prompted to enter participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialed in by phone, you raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmuting yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak and we'll call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit which you will see on the screen. And if you are connected live on Zoom, that timer is accurate with no delay. Our meeting is also being streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay. And on Comcast channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay, and we look forward as always to receiving public comments.
Nicely done, as always. And so we'll call our meeting to order. And would you introduce your current caring city council, please? And in a moment, I'll explain why are there only three people up here?
Yes, Councilmember Hoppa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
And I'm here too. So going down memory lane a little bit, I don't know how many of you remember a civic servant named Lou Haddad. So years ago, when I was first elected in 1981, the election was in May. And then when I ran for mayor in 1983, had I lost, I still would have stayed on council. So as a result of that, Mr. Haddad got a charter amendment. Which said that you don't run from a safe seat and I actually agree with that. And then the election was moved from May to November and also. As a result of the election, instead of waiting until certification. If council members ran for mayor. The day after the election, they were no longer council members according to our city charter. Rather than waiting for. Their election to be certified. So that's awkward and we miss Tyler and Dan up here as part of this ceremony. So that's how it happened. Anyway, that will be in my memoirs. And as I was saying, advanced copies are $50. If you don't want to be in them, that'll cost you $100. And so although Councilmember Dan Albert is not with us this evening, I know he had a prior meeting. Working very hard for MPC. We certainly wanted to take an opportunity to honor him. I want to introduce Hans. Would this be appropriate time to introduce our incredible city manager, Hans Usler? And I'll let you take it from there for a moment, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Albert joined the city council in 2016. After a career as public servant in our school system here locally. Councilmember Albert was instrumental in many of the initiatives that this council had to deal with. I believe Mayor Council Albert came at a time when we were. Finding our footings again in the wolf leases and that was part of. Probably also his understanding of the city to. Maneuver us together with the rest of the council into a situation where we. Created again an atmosphere of understanding and partnership, understanding also the city's position and. A shout out also to the WAF concessionaires that are here today in the chamber. Councilmember Albert was for us as staff member, always a formidable opponent or supporter. With respect to budget, because he was a person also who who understand the ins and outs of the budgets and. I called special slides that we had in our slide decks, always the Dan Albert slides. Because I knew that he would be coming with very specific questions that showed his deeper understanding of of public budgets. Having dealt with that in. In the school district for many years. So we want to thank Dan for his partnership. He was always a friend of city staff. He always appreciated. What we were doing and he also always appreciated the input from from the community and. We wish him very well.
Good. And so. As required by the Brown Act, but absolutely the right thing to do if we have any public comment on. Agenda item number one, this would be the opportunity to step forward. Those people who are in the chambers and we'll take a look and see if there's anybody online. Okay, let's go online, please.
All right, I would like to ask Ms. Tammy Jennings. Go, go ahead, please.
Is your mic on? Everybody here, Clementine? Okay. Okay, thank you. It's just me.
Hi.
Hi, Tammy.
Um. Hello there. I wanted to say that. I know that we're going back to. Not online or hybrid meetings. And I just wanted to say for some of us, this hybrid meeting thing. Works out really well. If we can't actually make it down there and we want to participate. I think this is something that should be done all the time regardless of COVID or not. But. I don't know if it has anything to do with a budget or other kinds of constraints. But it is very convenient for people that have a difficult time getting down to the chambers. And thank everybody for all the work you've done. Thank you, Mayor Clyde. You did a fantastic job. Merry Christmas, everybody, and hopefully everybody will stay safe and healthy and happy in the new year. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Anyone else?
I don't see any further hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so before we go on to the next agenda item, then I was at church and someone said to me. Isn't it great that the city of Monterey has two really good people running for mayor? And I thought, yes, it is. And so two honorable people, two people who ran a very good campaign. So I wanted to salute Dan Albert as a friend. Also as a teacher. And a coach. And a principal. You think being a council member or mayor is hard? Try being a principal of a school. And the school district's chief financial officer. So he did bring a lot of expertise and history to our city council. So we're very grateful for Dan. I had breakfast with him. He's doing well. Loves our city and he's just very happy to move on to what the next journey might be. And before I go too much further, I would love to introduce everyone in this room because there's such a broad spectrum of people from. I've known many of you and folks I don't know, hope to get to know you better, but I'm just so pleased. At the turnout and all of the folks here. And past and present and the stories we could regale you all with and what we're going to learn from people who are are new. To our system and that's to me what it's all about. It's a balance of the the new and the old and being open to. New things, but also learning from the past. So any comments from the council with respect to item one, Dan Albert?
Yeah, I'll just.
Councilmember Ed, please?
Yes, actually, Dan, for the last six years, has been a great. A great friend, but also somebody that if you disagreed on. Items or you disagreed on policy, the epitome of respectful, courteous. Sound judgment and leadership and so. Just, you know, he'll remain a friend. He comes from a great background. First meeting him when he was my daughter's wood shop teacher. Many years ago, and he has been a picture of steady, sound and selfless leader in this community. So. So much appreciated his service these last six years on the city council. And he'll remain a friend to many of us and so. Just wanted to say it's been great serving with him and as the process goes and you've mentioned. Mayor is that, you know, we either have an election every two years or we have an election. For the four year cycle for city council members. So folks come and folks go. But above all else, the leadership and the stability that the city council in the city of Monterey. Must maintain as we represent every citizen. And every community member of the city of Monterey is above all. The purpose of why we would sit in a city council or mayor's seat. So. Dan lived in that model and continues to serve in other capacities now, but thank you, Dan Albert, for your service. And for your dedication these last six years.
Thank you. Nicely said. Yeah. Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I really enjoyed working with Dan Albert the last six years. As Ed said, he was a very collegial council member. One of the things I appreciate about Dan was when sometimes there were times when he might have been on the side that was likely to prevail on a vote. But you could work with him and and he would sometimes be willing to compromise in order to try to make the vote, you know, four oh or five oh. And that's a really important thing, you know, it's not always just about pushing through what you want 100%. It's about trying to bring as many people together on a boat and. And represent the city as a whole as much as possible. And Dan was always really good about that. Personally, one issue that we worked together on. And I'm very happy about was our campaign finance reform act, which limited campaign donations to $500. And, you know, that was something I'd been trying to do for many, many years. And Dan was willing to, again, cooperate and compromise and and get that done. So. Dan, thank you very much for your service.
Yeah, thank you. So nicely said. All right, we'll go on to the second item. I'm such a low key person, those of you who know me really, really, really well. I'm very low key and not one who needs recognition, except for my wife and family, well, and everybody in the room now. But it's, I'm going to savor my remarks until after we go through this council agenda item. So again, I'll turn it to everyone's favorite city manager, Hans Usler.
Yeah, there's only one in the cities and that's the favorite.
What is that? May who is your or you're the what? No, don't bother. Go ahead.
Well. I hold the cards here, so. Yes, thank you so much. We are going. Into the next phase here of our agenda by recognizing. Our mayor Clyde, as he wanted to be called. Mayor Clyde came. Back to us as as mayor in 2014. And that was a particular interesting time for the city of Monterey because at that time. The city had special needs and he. He was at that time the right person coming into office again. Mayor Clyde was a veteran. In in public service, being on the council and various roles since 1981. And he had, he had worked. In different functions as council member, as mayor, but also as library board, trustee and president for a while. And so there are so many things that that formed Mayor Clyde's legacy that that I will not go over them. What was clear for us as staff was that Mayor Clyde came at a time when he realized also. That the relationships between staff and council needed to be improved and and he did just that. And for that, our staff is. Very grateful because you definitely showed us immediately how you wanted to improve relationships there that were. Sometimes not as well as they are today. You had a steady hand for us throughout the years. You. Maneuvered us through some critical phases. One of them. I mentioned earlier was when when you came to the city, we were in the middle of. Revamping the WAF leases and we were walking down a path. That you helped in the end to finalize and and that was critical for us and it was helpful for us and it. Established again, I believe. Contemporary relationships between us and our friends on the wall. You were also there for things that that were. Kind of taboo until then because we needed to reinvest into the infrastructure and you were willing to go. Into not so popular tax measures and measure P. Directly traces back to you and also other council members, but your support was important that that you gave us and with that you. Helped also create a majority for this tax measure. Nobody. Really knew exactly what was going to happen. And you asked me the other day, what, why did we only do four years, Hans? The first time around and and I told you, well, they they don't trust us yet. And you said, well, I said, that's why we did then a second one with nine years. And I explained to you why it was nine and not 10, but I'm not telling the public that. And the. The the issue, so with that, this is an incredible amount of money that we are getting right now that. Has left its marks in all the neighborhoods. We were. Required by you and by the council, get get the money into the neighborhoods and and we keep keep doing it. Throughout the years and will continue doing it. And then last but not least. And I just picked three because you asked me to be brief. We. We had you also at the helm together with. Our colleagues from the council to maneuver through COVID. And I cannot emphasize enough how. Important it is to have somebody like Mayor Clyde at the helm who knows the neighborhood, who has his ears on the ground. And who can tell a city manager, city staff and his colleagues. Where the issues were and that was absolutely necessary during those critical times and you provided significant support. The the last item I want to say is that impressed me the most also was you left a mark also on climate change, climate action. You made it always clear to everyone and sometimes even publicly. The best housing policies don't don't help us if if our planet is burning under our feet. And I paraphrase you here, but you focused us also on the bigger pictures always that we have to deal. We have to deal with. And all the the topics that that are confronting our city and our society. But climate change, climate action is probably one of the largest ones. That that we are trying to work in our little microcosmos here with. And you have some guests here tonight that that can tell you probably way more what. How important it is to work on on climate change. So with that, Mayor Clyde, we we want to say good. Good goodbye to you and wish you well. We we will not follow a certain speaker protocol here, so there are no Rosenberg rules or Brown Act rules right now. It's it's kind of. The attorney gave us off today, so we will, we will have a few folks that will be speaking. But I wanted to first and foremost. Do a few gifts for you because I know you you are just waiting to fill your garage with that.
No, I will tell you, Hans, with the city attorney giving us the night off for the Brown Act. That's present enough, isn't it? You can't top that one.
I know. And I know this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. So first and foremost. Nobody could do the job that you are doing. If it wouldn't be for a strong partner at the home front. And our, our friend, your wife, Dottie. Has been a steadfast supporter of you for also quite some years now. I always fondly remember my first tree lighting ceremony and I want to say 26 years ago. And I still remember the shout out, no, the first lady of Monterey or something like that, Dottie Robertson will sing. And Dottie was singing at the tree lighting ceremony. And I was thinking, oh, what comes now? And it was the most beautiful evening for me. And it showed me what the city is all about. And I want to thank Dottie for helping our mayor to be who he is and to make him successful and to be there for him. And we have a little gift for you as well. A few weeks ago, we, we met with the whole city staff and the remaining council. And we took a picture with you and Dottie in front of Colton Hall. And we all stood there. I think about 100, 150 folks showed up for that photo event. And so we'll give you here this photo that we really hope you will hang in your, your studies that, that we will still watch, so.
And, and the photo is on the screen. Isn't that great? Yeah, I, I must say that I was a bit overwhelmed when I saw the folks who turned out for that photo.
Then
Get it all for you, Dottie.
Then we, we went into the archives and we looked up the, the different photographs that we have in the archives. And if we can show a few of those, Lori probably knows where they are. Here is the mayor when he was sworn in as mayor in 1983.
Wait, is, is he wearing a tie there?
Yes, he's wearing a tie. But I like to point out on the right hand side is, is the groundbreaking for Monterey Bay Boat Works. This was a former landfill site. And there's now where Monterey Boat Works is with all the lifts and, and the other things. And you see the mayor showed up in a sweater. And on the left hand side, you see the proud owners of Boat Works, all in dark suits with a little flower in their, on their coat. And the gentleman to the right laughing already, heart, heartfelt laughing is Leon Panetta. And, and you see him there. So that's Mayor Clyde speaking at Monterey Bay Boat Works Boat Groundwork. And if we can take a check, they told me actually I look like Paul Parker when I hold it like that. But, but we had a so the next, can we see the next?
I think they're Tell them to be sure to neuter their pets. Okay.
Yeah, so that's basically here in the photo book where we have a lot of photos. And you will be surprised how many speeches you were holding because we have a lot of photos with you and making speak.
Wow, thanks, yeah.
So another steadfast partner over the many Zoom meetings that we had over the past years was sometimes when the mayor was turning off the sound because there was always an excuse what his little dog was doing in the background. Luckily she was just barking, but it was either the mailman or there was a noise at the door or something unusual happened. So we want to not forget Gracie. I want to thank Gracie for her partnership and for her loyalty. And so we'll have a little goodie basket here and it's not for Sasha. But I'm glad that the mayor-elect has a dog as well, but this is just for Gracie. And, and we hope that she remembers us fondly as well.
She will.
I promise you, I hurry up, Tyler. The other part is, this is the official gift that every mayor gets when he re, when he retires. It's the crystal gavel on, on a little plaque. And you might not have gotten it or you might have forgotten about it, but yes. And last but not least, Mayor, we will start with some folks that are here to honor you. You, you see them sitting to the, to your left.
Yeah.
But the first is I want to read into the record, congressional record that Congressman Panetta read into the 117th Congress, second session honoring Mayor Clyde Robertson. And Jimmy Panetta read this into the record on the floor of the Congress. Madam Speaker, I rise today to recognize Mr. Clyde Robertson on the occasion of his retirement as mayor of the city of Monterey. Mr. Robertson enters retirement after nearly three decades of leadership on the Monterey City Council, including six terms as mayor. And his legacy of public service is one of unwavering devotion to improving the lives of others. Born in Oakland, California, Mr. Robertson began his career as a teacher starting in 1968. Mr. Robertson spent 35 years teaching in Monterey, working alongside students, parents and fellow community members. After encouragement from the community, he founded the Monterey Sports Center, filling a need for an indoor swimming facility and gymnasium. Mr. Robertson also established the Neighborhood and Community Improvement Program in 1985. Since its funding founding, he has coordinated over $90 million in funding for residential streets, storm drains, sewers, parks and infrastructure projects. Through his work with the Historical Preservation Committee and his support of the Hotel Moratorium, he has overseen the restoration of historic structures and preventing overdevelopment on the Monterey coastline, helping preserve the Central Coast's unique heritage and environment. Mr. Robertson ties his service to the people of Monterey and his commitment to improving the city's infrastructure defined his six terms of service as mayor of Monterey. Through his partnership with the mayors for 100% clean energy and support the Central Coast Community Power for Renewable Energy and the Regional Climate Action Compact, Mr. Robertson emboldened California's commitment to sustainable and renewable sources of energy. Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues in the House of Representatives to join me in recognizing Mr. Clyde Robertson for his decades of immeasurable service to his community. On behalf of California's 20th Congressional District, I extend my personal appreciation to Mayor Robertson for his leadership and innovative efforts in serving the people of Monterey. And that concludes what I have to say.
Thank you, Hans. Very nice. Welcome, good friend and Senator Larry.
Thank you very much. There aren't many things that would make me jump in the car in Sacramento and drive directly to Monterey. But this is one. And we have a special tie, which is that it was said earlier that Clyde was elected to the city council in 1981. Well, so was I. And Clyde was elected mayor in 1983. And so was I. And I should add, Mayor Clyde, much to our dissatisfaction, both those elections happened before the mayor-elect was born. And I think the, the, the great thing is, is we were considered upstarts at the time.
Yeah.
Both coming from a different career in public service to do it, which you kept doing as, as teacher. And while you were doing Window of the Bay, we were developing the park at Lighthouse Field. We were both working together for the Monterey Bay Sanctuary. You were working on the trail as we were doing a similar thing. And it was sort of a team effort around real things that really made a difference. And I don't think either one of us knew the amount of time we would be spending on climate change later in the same public service career. And you were just, some of the things that I think people in the room now take completely for granted, such as the Neighborhood and Community Improvement Program. That was initiated during your first time as mayor. And it's something that is just an institution in Monterey. And you started the process for the Monterey Sports Center. And as I mentioned, the trail. So there are many things that you leave as a legacy from long service. I'm sure somebody's passing out because you're leaving office. But the real thing is, is that you were teaching for 35 years. And I think nobody knows how hard it is to get almost no remuneration for what people believe is a full-time job and to be carrying a job at the same time in doing it. And in your case, both of them were amazing public service. And so I just wanted to make a point of being here. And I particularly loved the last two years, being able to, to call you about pressing issues and say, this is what we're doing. He would say, this is what we need and just fit together like old times in making sure that for our common constituents, we did the right thing. And, and I just really want to make a point of saluting you for such a long, wonderful career of service. And I'm really glad Dottie got recognized because I know what a partner she has been in that. And so on behalf of the state senate, and, and clearly this last year, we have a better budget than you have had. On behalf of the state senate, we actually commend Clyde for his exemplary leadership as mayor of Monterey, a member of the city council, his outstanding record in the community, his civic leadership, and extend sincere best wishes for the so-called retirement. Because you and I have raced to see who has had the most retirement parties throughout our career. And I think you're moving one up today. So I just want to congratulate you and really want to make a point of being here for just an incredible career of service. Thank you on behalf of everybody we
Senator, Senator John Laird was speaking. He was the mayor of Santa Cruz. I don't know if you had been, and we were here in Monterey. And I'm always so impressed when the senator always says, say hello to Dottie. I said, well, how do you remember her name? With all of the people that he's met, well, that was his mother's name. And I thought that's so special to me. So again, thanks, John. It's been a good ride. All right. And you didn't, that wasn't a hint of a retirement announcement from you, I don't think. Okay. Well, we do have an open mic and
First of all, neither of you are retiring. I don't believe that.
No, everybody knows you, but if you would like to tell us who you are, or I would be my honor.
I'm Julie Packard, Director of the Monterey Bay Aquarium. And on behalf of our whole team, Clyde, we just, I mean, where would I start? But I was doing a little math, realized I was 28 when, and I don't, you don't have to reveal how old you were back then. But when we first started working together on the Monterey Bay Aquarium. And for, for those who were involved over those years, you know, it was a big, a big project and a lot of really complicated permits. I mean, the city of Monterey was only the beginning. But I just can't say enough, you have been a remarkable public servant. I mean, you and, and the job has just gotten harder and harder, more and more complexities. And same goes to your fellow council members. I, I can't imagine how much time you all have to put in, in your, you know, along with your day jobs. But I just wanted to, wanted to say that we are all so grateful for all of your support over all these many years, the tough times, the really dicey, you know, negotiations around parking. And I mean, I have this memory of you finally at some point, like you were having, I was having to, you know, put together a meeting between you and my father. And having a meeting with my father was never, never a good thing, actually. Even for me as his daughter, but I'll never forget, you rode your bike and probably wearing a sweater to the meeting. And I just thought, I love that. This man has got a lot of confidence. He is not afraid of anything. So I hope that you feel proud of the aquarium as, I mean, really, it's, it's, it's your legacy and all of the amazing city staff that work so hard to put it together. And we have a little gift for you as a memento of, which is a jelly sculpture by Rick Satava, California artist. Just a reminder, Monterey Bay Aquarium has put jellies and so many other animals on the map for the world. It all happened here and you all helped make that legacy happen. So thank you so very much. We're eternally grateful and, and wish you well.
Thank you, Julie. All the stories we could tell, right? But we are so grateful for the aquarium and I'm sure we have some wherf folks here and business people. And they can remember pre-aquarium when October, November, December, January, the city of Monterey was a ghost town. And not only do you have an ecological and environmental institution, you've really been an economic driver for us too. So we're really grateful for that. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Colleen Courtney and I work for Monterey County Supervisor Mary Adams.
Yes, hi, Colleen. So in person?
In person.
We have zoomed. Have that happened to you? You, you, all of a sudden you've zoomed so many meetings and you see someone in person. Oh.
Yes, I'm no longer a box. So Supervisor Adams could not be here today, but she wrote a letter that she'd like for me to read on her behalf. So, my dear Mr. Mayor, it is with deep respect and admiration that I thank you and applaud your many years of commitment and service to the people of the city of Monterey and indeed to the people of Monterey County as a whole. Your dedication has resulted in a community that fosters excellent international relations, achieves national renown, leads local initiatives and prospers beyond expectation. Your ability to partner with other jurisdictions on problem solving and your visionary approach to regional solutions leaves a lasting legacy. From my personal perspective, I am grateful that you have always been so gracious with your time and your willingness to brainstorm immediate or potential problems. While there are many things I could say about you, it would be a loss not to mention your wonderful sense of humor and your keen insight into how to dispel tension in a meeting. And we've both seen some tension in some meetings. Clyde, I knew Dottie before I knew you. The League of Women Voters produced some amazing women and you were fortunate enough to win the heart of one of the best. One never knows what lies ahead, but when the present is filled with goodness, kindness and a pure heart, the future will surely be bright. Thank you for all you have done for our community. You set a high benchmark for all of us. And speaking for Monterey County as a whole, I know we are a better people because of you. Sincerely, Mary Adams.
Oh, that's very sweet. Thanks, dear.
And on behalf of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors, our esteemed Chair Adams wasn't here today, but I'm your former chair, Wendy Root Askew. And we've approved a resolution, another thing for you to throw on your wall. And I will just say personally, the kind of collaboration that you model is a constant reminder for me and for everyone that I work with, that we can achieve great things when we're working together, when we do it with kindness and with love and with care for our community. And as a, as a kid who went to school here in Monterey, thank you for your leadership and thank you for creating this community that I get to raise my own family in here now.
Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate it. Then our last speaker was Wendy Root Askew, our fourth district supervisor. So glad you're here. Thank you. So we, nobody else needs to say anything, but we do have an open mic. If you, anyone wants to share. Then I'll share my forty three page treatise that I'm prepared for you. We're going to welcome a former council member Carl Outson and one of my very best friends.
I think we need to go back to, can I take this one out?
Well, not technically, but ask the vice mayor.
So memory lane a little bit. That was in nineteen eighty one. When you asked me and a couple of other neighbors to come up to your house, you would like to talk to us about being a possible candidate for city council. And we, we had a good meeting that night and it ended up with the Bill Hyler asked for collection. So you became the mayor, I mean, the council member. Couple of years after, that was in nineteen eighty three. You decided that time that to run for mayor against Jerry Five. And Clyde, I've been into my archives a little bit. And I have a full page of advertising.
Yeah, yeah.
And I kept that one. At that time, the newspaper was a little bit different than today. It was more neighborhood and city oriented and really was concerned about the cities in the area where they had the newspaper, not only Monterey, but Pacifico and so forth. So at that time, you said when you ran for mayor that some of your commitment to the city would be and the principles. And Clyde, through the years, you have always kept those principles. You said in nineteen eighty three, at some point, more attention from city hall to the needs of the neighborhoods. First priority of city services to local residents. Opposition to overdevelopment and its harmful effects on our city. Final fiscal responsibility, tax money for serving the people, not speculative real estate ventures. Equal treatment for all Monterey citizens. There's just a few. And you know what? You never changed. You've always been a champion for the residents and the people of Monterey. There will be some of those tremendous things which we can be happy for today, which went on to your, under your leadership. Like in preservation Monterey, we formed a historic preservation commission. They never had preservation commission they never had before. And the neighborhood programs then came to, at that time, there was four neighborhoods association, city Monterey. Later on, we had eleven under your leadership, leadership, and every single one endorsed you every time you went for the city elected office. So I could go on. I have a couple of pages, but I know there'll be more speakers. So I just wanted to say thank you from my heart to the service of the city of Monterey you have done.
Thank you, Carl. Welcome, neighbor.
I am Bill Wacowski. My wife Kathy and I have known Clyde and Dottie since nineteen eighty four, when I was appointed Director of Community Development for the city of Monterey. Clyde was mayor at that time and right after my appointment, he called me and said, not, he said, he directed me to buy the house across the street. He said, we could walk across the street and discuss planning matters in complete violation of the Brown Act. He didn't say that. In priority, in priority, Clyde has been my friend, my neighbor, my tennis partner and as well as the mayor of Monterey. Thank you for all you have done. It would take too long to list all your accomplishments, but some of the major ones, the NIP, the Hotel Moratorium, the sports center, window on the bay, the rec trail. Clyde and Dottie and Kathy and I live on a small street via Gayuba, which is changing quite a bit over the last five to 10 years. Every new household that comes, goes to Clyde. They ask about plumbing. They ask about this kind of permit, that kind of permit. So Clyde, although you will no longer be the mayor of Monterey, you will always be the mayor of Via Gayuba.
Welcome, Mayor.
Well, thank you. For those of you that may not know me, my name is Ian Obusbe, Mayor of the city of Seaside. I want to say, congratulate Clyde on a wonderful career. When, I didn't know you were first sworn in or elected mayor in nineteen eighty three. I, I was born then. But I, I think I was just getting out of high school and since then, you know, two careers and a retirement. And then finally a community service. And I wanted to acknowledge your second go around because I missed the first one. And that's really why I'm up here today is to acknowledge the second one as mayor of Monterey. I know for me, when you first got elected again as mayor, I, I thought it was, you know, your service to the community, but also the citizens saying they needed a steady hand. They needed a calm, cool, collective person that knew what they were doing. That's what I always thought. And then I had the opportunity to meet you and I knew they made a right decision. I knew that that's what they wanted because that's what you already showed yourself to me to be and the rest of the mayors on the peninsula, particularly in our mayor's association group. I want to say thank you for that because your cool, calm collectiveness has always been something I watch. And I try to take lessons from you to be a better mayor as you are a mayor of Monterey. And for those that don't know, we appointed you to the water management district. And after every meeting, Clyde's do a little summary, more like a little book report to let us know what's going on at that meeting. And that's very unusual as mayors. We tend not to come back and tell people what we're doing from the group, right? But I just wanted to be here to acknowledge you, to say that you and Dottie, what you guys have done for this community, this county, this region is just, just remarkable. Thank you for your service. Thank you for being a friend to the rest of the mayors. And just you as an individual will be hard pressed to recreate. You will be missed in our group and I know the citizens of Monterey feel the same thing. And I just wanted to say from my heart, and I shared this with you before, is we really appreciate you and what you've been doing for your decades of service here in the city of Monterey and the region as a whole. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I wanted to thank you for the great letter that you wrote to the coast commission and any staff and council that was involved. I want you to know that we did get over seventeen hundred signatures on patents for this. And it was a wherf group effort, except for one person. And I just want to thank you and I've known you for a long time and I wouldn't miss this. And thank you very much.
Thanks for being here, Dominic.
So I, I think you might be heading out and, and so I may not be able to give my public appreciation for you, Clyde, later today. But I remember when I first met you, I think it was twenty sixteen, there was a reception over at Miss that we went to afterwards. And I had the opportunity to socialize with you and Dottie. And I've met mayors before, but there was something special about my interaction with you and Dottie. You were so personable and relatable and humble. And I am just so honored to have been able to eventually get elected to the council and serve with you. I sat right next to you and that's where you came up with the phrase senior millennial that will stick with me forever. And so I love you Clyde. I will always remember our Sunday breakfasts once a month with you and Dottie. And I love you both dearly. So thank you so much for all your service.
And we'll, we might not be able to do once a month with how busy you're going to be. Boy, we definitely need to reinstate our occasional get togethers. They were just really a highlight with you and Ivan and Sasha. One of my, we have three or four favorite pictures of my wife holding Sasha at a restaurant. And he, Sasha's just licking her face and Dottie is just exploding with joy. So, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Are you getting close to closing item number two?
Yeah.
Before you did, may I insert myself as the vice mayor?
Yes, please, council member, vice member.
We're not in any hurry to relieve you, but I know that you are not going to call for the other council comments or staff. And I want to make sure we don't lose anybody who is here that has not stepped forward, that wants to say anything about Mayor Clyde. So last call.
I'd like to, yeah. So Clyde, there's so many things I appreciate about you, but I wanted to share a couple. First of all, in case you all can't tell, Clyde likes to tell stories. And, and I've learned a lot from those stories. They're also always very interesting and entertaining. Clyde also likes to tell jokes. And, and what I especially appreciate is he sometimes even laughs at my jokes, which is always nice. And then I just, you know, being on a council, we sometimes get invited to events. And there was, I think it was the fiftieth anniversary for community human services. And Tyler and I were there and you were there with Dottie. And after dinner, you know, there was music, but not a whole lot of people were dancing. And I think Tyler and I went out there and we were starting, and then we went and, and you and Dottie came out and danced with us. And then pretty soon everybody came out. And it was just such a really wonderful time. And then finally, just in terms of your leadership, I really appreciate your capacity for listening. And you've heard from community members and how, you know, listening to the neighborhoods is a priority. But I also appreciated that you listened to us and that you came to meetings open to change and open to persuasion. And thank you very much for your service and for the example of leadership you've given to all of us.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Alan. And thank you for everybody who came to, to talk and, and share your stories and they are so numerous and every one of them is good. In these last eight years of being on the city council, there's several takeaways and I don't want to repeat what's already been said, but I want to highlight a phrase that I think coined everything about Clyde, where he's able to get to the meat of the matter and able to go through the agenda and listen to everyone. But his phrase, don't let perfect get in the way of good. Always resonated with me and always comes in handy when there's four others and the mayor is trying to navigate and run a meeting and we're trying to get to the ultimate vote. And as Alan has said, it's not just push through and just be satisfied with getting a vote, but it's more being careful how we craft together policy that can be understood and interpreted. And I always appreciated your wisdom in regards to that. The other thing that many people don't see is what happens with closed session. And you certainly know, we have the council meeting and then we go into closed session to, to deal with legal matters or personnel and contracts and the sort. He's a master. He's good in a regular council meeting, but he's really good in closed session. Because of his experience and his ability to be efficient and get through the, the complicated things that has to happen in closed session. So you're going to be missed. We greatly appreciate you, your skill set and what you bring to the city. And we all know, as you heard tonight, that you are revered and honored. And this is not a wake. He is not going anywhere. He has promised to still be involved and we look forward to those occasions where the entire community gets to be able to still be your friend and still spend time with you and Dottie. And we thank you so much for all you have done.
Well, I have just so very thankful for all of you being here and your kind words. I have to tell you, Gracie's package. So we have a little rat terrier and she's extraordinarily alert. So every time we have a Zoom meeting, I'm upstairs and all of a sudden you can hear Gracie in the background with this shrill rat terrier voice. So I have to mute it. So during the coastal commission hearing on the D cell plant, Cal Am's D cell plant, I was going to be one of the speakers. So we got to the public speakers and Gracie was somewhere in the house. So I saw that Supervisor Askew spoke, then Mary Adams, and I saw I was next, so I unmuted. And so you know what happened, but did you hear it? So our dog starts yipping her head off and I got, and so they muted me because I had unmuted myself. So Gracie made the coastal commission hearing. My granddaughter asked me one day, what are your mayor benefits? And that was a really good question. And, and the second question she asked, it still gets my heart. It is, are you still going to have time for us? Cause we have five grandkids, three in college, next year, five will be in college. And probably the question is for my wife and I to say to them, will you have, will you have time for us? So you know, when I think back, the mayor benefits, it's all about people like you in this room. It's all teamwork. Of course, my wife, Dottie, who's my friend, my advisor, very patient. And it's really helpful to have someone at home who can say, yeah, you're on the right track or say, no, you aren't on the right track. And have somebody who, who can tell you that, that you really need to relook at things. And so I appreciate that so much from her. My daughter Jennifer is here. And her husband Javier, thank you both for being here. And, and my daughter too, the first time I was on the council and mayor, she was in middle school. I won't say how old you are because they're then, because they'll be able to figure out how old you are now. They're both teachers. They're both working in Seaside and Alisal and working with children who are lingu- English language learners who have lots of challenges. And so Senator Laird was talking about the teachers. And so I just want to acknowledge them, a teacher family, my mother, my uncles, my brother, his wife, another daughter. It's just, it's in the genes and I've told the grandkids you're going to be teachers. No, we're not. I said, it's in your DNA. So we'll see. And I want to think about the active, authentic public and all of the giving, empathetic, this is my adjectives, you know about my adjectives. I'll give you my list, Tyler, if you want it. And the empathetic nonprofits who care so much about our city, that was mentioned. Our altruistic volunteers, dedicated commissioners. I had the pleasure of interviewing them and bringing them to the council for recommendations without fail. Whether someone was new to the city, was born and raised here, they said they wanted to give back. Then our illustrious elected officials going way back and their staffs. And of course, the caring members on our city council over the years. I've also already mentioned Dan, but I wanted to congratulate and mission, mention energetic, passionate Tyler Williamson. And he said, we met six years ago. It was instant rapport. And we still have it. I, we must be related somehow or another because we just, I enjoy your sense of humor, your passion. You've taught me a lot and I've moved on a lot of issues as Alan pointed out and how caring you are. And congratulations to our impressive new member from New Monterey and Old Town, Dr. Kim Barber. And congratulations to our impressive new member from New Monterey on Old Town, Dr. Kim Barber. And she's here and will be sworn in shortly. And I had the pleasure of meeting her and I'm so happy you and, and your husband are here. And then our intelligent, insightful council member Ed Smith, friend, supporter, with his excellent public safety background and common sense. And our perceptive council member Alan Hoffa. As he mentioned consensus, yet he has very strong commitments to issues. And he's really a good motion maker. Bringing everybody together. And of course, our business, our hospitality in a military communities, we're really complicated. Someone asked me once at a talk, they were a delegation from the EU and said, "How many people in your city?" And I said, "About 30,000." And they said, "What?" Because look, look, there's another speech that's, stick to the script, Clyde. Very complicated city, but we have our business and our hospitality in our military communities. And we have a really impassioned youth who give me hope all the time. And we have a really amazing, competent, sterling professional staff over all the years. So I am so grateful for our staff, starting with the city manager throughout the entire staff. Our Monterey PD, thank you for being here. They're, they are paradigms of community policing and really role models throughout the country. So I'm very appreciative to everyone for the teamwork. Your devotion to our city and as was kind of intimated, I'm going to be trying to get more active in cap- climate action because we really need to step up. And to keep our small town feeling that we have, it's been all about working together and teamwork and relationships and cooperation and collaboration and connections and friendships. It's really nice to think that your colleagues throughout the city are your friends as well. We often talk about a city family. That's true. Monterey is very special that way. So I love this city and I will continue to be around and work with you to take care of it going forward. So thank you, team. So we have one more business item of this current council and that is get it out. And we want to adopt a resolution reciting the results of the November 8th election. And it says to install newly elected officers. Well, because of the awkwardness of the city charter, we're going to be doing this. We're going to adopt the resolution and we're going to take a recess. Then coming back, that's the time that we'll be installing our, our new council members for 2022 and 2024. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for
I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution reciting the facts, details of the election of November 8th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Will the lawyer be a pain in, um, for public comment?
You're off tonight, by the way.
Oh, there'll be public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. I should have done, I should have done public comment before the motion, huh?
Yeah, public, yeah, public comment.
Well, I did that on purpose, Chrissy, so you'd have one more chance to keep me straight. So are there any election deniers in here? You wouldn't dare, but any public comment on certifying the election results? All right, seeing none, back to, we have a motion in a second and roll call, please, Clementine.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Aye.
And Mayor Roberson?
Aye. Well, that concludes this part of the meeting. We'll take a recess. And I'm sure everybody's going to want to stick around for the rest of the meeting. And also it's going to be really interesting when you take a look at all those applicants. This is going to be really a fun and difficult process to fill the missing council seat. So I wish you all the best with that. We'll take a 10 minute break. And when we bid back, there'll be a, a very nice young mayor who I think beat me by two years as the youngest mayor and then, and I challenge you to beat me as the oldest mayor.
Monterey five, so we're notorious for being a little bit tardy, but thank you for your patience. At this point, let's turn the next item over to city manager. Bonn.
Yes, thank you very much. I hand it over to City Clerk Clementine Bonnackline.
Yes, thank you very much. So we have some special guests who've been invited today to sermonneally administer the oath of office to our newly elected members at this time. And just a few brief words about the oath of office. It's a binding promise or statement of fact taken upon the signer's honor. And they may swear or affirm an oath. Public officials are required to take the oath of office before taking any official actions. And this is a ceremonial, serious honor. So at this time, we are honored to invite Vice Admiral Anne Rondo, who is president of the Naval Postgraduate School, to administer the oath to our new Monterey mayor, Mr. Tyler Williamson.
Right to starting, I thought I would take if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Mayor, soon.
My boss.
Yeah. Tyler will owe you a boss. So, right, okay, the city Monterey, it is wonderful to be able to have this privilege and honor. United States Navy and military have been such a part of Monterey for so long. I remember that Clyde was at my, um, I own in Washington as president of NPS. And the, that just goes back to the history of us. I've had the privilege of being in city halls around the country as a base commander, as an installation commander. And each time, our contacts as military with the citizenry with whom we live, with, with whom we cry, laugh, live and enjoy life is really important for all of us. So this is a privilege to be here with the great city of Monterey, fabulous city. And now this honor of being with Tyler and with you is on behalf of all of us who just enjoy and treasure this great city. So Tyler, we're going to go ahead and do this. I kind of feel like I should be in a rock, in a rock band or something here. Okay. This is very similar to a military oath. It's a, it's an oath that every president of the United States takes relative to where he or she is. And all public servants take. It's very similar. Now if we listen to it, think about the commitment. An oath is a promise. It's a covenant that service, of service and obligation. And so these words are really important. And when a person internalizes them, they realize how easy it is to serve because it's the integrity of that sense of service that touches our hearts. So Tyler, state your name in the right place.
I. Tyler Williamson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and that I will support and defend, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the, to the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California. And that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will faithfully and well serve the duties upon which I am about to encounter, to enter. Tyler, it's great to have you as a mayor of Monterey.
Okay, so now I have some notes to, to look at here to tell me what to do next. So I think next we're just gonna have Dr. Kim Barber come up with Monterey County Supervisor Wendy Root ask you who's gonna be doing the ceremonial oath for her. So I invite both of you up.
All right, all right. Here we are. Here we are. So in the spirit of a few pre comments, I want to say my family moved to Monterey when I was in second grade. And they chose Monterey because of the community, because of the, the schools, because of the public amenities that are here. And I feel so lucky that I get to not stay in Monterey, but get to live in this larger community and raise my son here. And it is so important that our children be leaders who look like them, who have lived experiences that are diverse and broad, who have, who have a vision that is beyond that which our cities were founded on. And Dr. Barber, you bring that. You're bringing that. You are bringing that. And you are brave to run and you are brave to sit in these seats. And if I can leave you with any advice, it's that I hope that you're able to lead with love and lead with integrity and lead with knowing, lead with the knowledge that simply by you being here and you sitting in that seat, it's opening up doors and shattering ceilings for so, so many little girls, big girls, boys, all of us. We, we are, we are, we're so lucky to, to have, to have you in this seat. So thank you for running. Thank you for being willing to sit and service to our community here. So with that, I, Kim Barber, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge these duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations and thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, and at this time, we will do the swearing in of Councilmember Ed Smith, and that will be conducted by our City Clerk Clementine Bonner Klein.
Hi, Ed. Councilmember Smith, could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend
I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
I will bear truth, face, faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and to the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely,
I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation,
without any, any mental reservation,
or purpose of evasion,
or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
I will well and faithfully
discharge the duty
discharge the duty
upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon the, upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll pass it to our city clerk to do roll call, please.
We have a new roll call. Councilmember Barber, Councilmember Hoffa,
here.
Councilmember Smith,
here.
and Mayor Williamson.
Here. So I'm going to my council member colleagues speak first and then, and then I'll conclude some, some remarks and then we'll move on with the rest of the agenda. So I'll pass it to Dr. Kim Barber first. Councilmember Barber.
Well, first of all, thank you. Thank you to everyone who has come out to support. There we go. I'll get the hang of this. Thank you to everyone who has come out to support those that are online. I have a lot of family online, so hello to my family online as well and the family that is here. And to all of the supporters, endorsers, and just everyone, the community at, at large, not just District One, but everywhere. We thank you so much. And I thank you personally for everything that you've done in getting us here because this is not just about me. This is about all of us. We're in this together and I am just grateful to be able to serve.
Congratulations, Dr. Barber. And congratulations, Mayor Williamson. I just want to say thank you to all of the supporters. This was an unusual election. As you know, no one ran against me. And so I saved a little time. But as I reflected during the process, knowing that we were going through a changed charter because now we have district elections. So I want to say that I've made a commitment to represent District Two, but actually, what does that really mean? And I truly hope that what that means for me and other district council members is that we look at the whole community. That we do not just compartmentalize, that we say we are committed to our entire city of Monterey. As I represent District Two, that means I still represent the city at large and I appreciate your support. Appreciate all the Facebook notices, the phone calls, the texts. You know, just the last six months has been a tremendous show of support and I appreciate that. It's a little bit strange having no one to have to debate hard against. But we did get to participate in many of the community organized occasions and that was very enjoyable to be with Dr. Barber, Dan Albert, and Tyler Williamson. And we appreciate the effort that this community goes through to make sure that we have honest elections, that we are transparent, that we vet our candidates and we know who the community is electing. So greatly appreciate that. And thank you so much to the family, my wife of forty nine years, my son and my daughter-in-law who are here, and my daughter in Florida and her family. Thank you so much for the family support. As has been said tonight, this cannot be done without the support of family. And especially the Tuesday nights that we come together and we think we're gonna be done at nine o'clock and it winds up being done at eleven thirty. But we appreciate the time commitment that the family makes. Thank you for family and friends. Thank you for this being such a wonderful community to be able to continue to serve. And I want to do a shout out to Public Safety Partners, Law Enforcement and Fire. Thank you for the well, the job that you do so well. All of the city staff that serves this community. And we get the privilege to see from the start of an agenda item to the completion of the service. And we are so privileged to have so many good servants, excellent servants throughout this community and much appreciated to all of them because they're really the ones that deliver the goods. Thank you all.
So wow, I, I am so honored to be serving as Monterey's next mayor and I couldn't have done it without community. And, and it's one of the things that has caused me to be here today and moving to Monterey, purchasing a home, settling down here with my partner Ivan. It's that sense of community and I felt very welcome moving in here and developing the relationships. Mayor Clyde spoke about that earlier in his departing speech about the need for the community and, and how important that is. And so I'm super excited to, to get our sleeves rolled up here and, and get to work with this new council. And so I just will quickly speak to some of those things. And I know that a lot of you have been following this and I, I promise it won't be long-winded here, but housing is so important. And I know it can seem like a talking point and it, you know, it can seem like it's a, it's an issue that you can try to bring up to make folks happy about addressing an issue that might be important to them. I know that housing is hard and it's complex. And I don't think that we're going to solve it over the next two years. But not doing anything at all is not a solution, I think, for this council. And so I'm, I'm excited to work with my colleagues, but it's not just about us. It's about the community engaging with us and having a conversation about what that looks like for the city of Monterey. So I, I'm excited to focus on the issue of housing, but very much connected that, of course, is water. And us as a city in, in Monterey, we don't have direct control over those things, but we can have the leadership to help work with our regional partners on addressing those issues and making sure that we're solving that because we're not gonna be able to solve the housing issue without it. And, and the last piece that I will speak to is transparency and public engagement. I, I just spoke to this when, when I was talking about the housing piece, but you know, a lot of you are here because you supported me in my bid for mayor. But your work doesn't end here either. I need you all to show up and be present and bring your friends with you because we need to hear from you. We can't just sit in a silo up here and try to get things done. These issues are gonna be hard and complex. And at this point, I will even speak to the people that didn't support me for this election. I'm not here just because of those, the folks that supported me, but I'm here because of the election process and the democratic process that we have. I am here to be a mayor for everybody in the city of Monterey and I want to hear from you as well. So I hope that we can take this opportunity to engage in, in a public dialogue about practicing this democratic process that we have and really finding those systemic barriers that exist that prevent groups of people within our community from wanting to come out and share their voice in the first place or being unable to share their voice in the first place. So you know, again, I promise I won't go long on the issues, but just kind of wanted to highlight those quickly. And I wanted to wrap up by giving thank yous to all of my supporters. Thank you all so much for everything that you've done from door knocking to hosting meet and greets and fundraisers to tabling and registering voters to doing a car parade around downtown. Every single little thing, whether it's putting a stamp on an envelope, every little bit counts. And I just am so honored to have had the support. I woke up every morning during the campaign pinching myself and trying to understand where are all these people coming from that are offer, offering me support, people that had no clue who I was or I had no clue who they were. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you to my family. My father, Terry, Dad, could you please stand, is here. My mom, Sandy, is here. Mom, come, stand up. Who was the quasi campaign manager for the latter part of the campaign. And I'll just kind of go in a little bit deeper and just say, she would go around canvassing with me. So if you could just imagine the, the, the extent to which she would go to waking up really early in the morning and being with me till late in the evening. So thank you, Mom, for that. And then my brother Ryan is also here and he's been a wonderful support as well. So Ryan, go ahead and stand up. And, and for my family, I want to end with my partner Ivan, Ivan Kudos Batista and my dog, our dog Sasha. Clyde, Clyde couldn't have said it better that you have to have that support at home, whether it's saying, hey, you're doing a good job or helping, helping us get back on the right track. And I just appreciate you, Ivan, for being so authentic and, and real and so supportive of me and patient as I'm running around with a very thin schedule. So thank you so much. And then I want to thank my, my colleagues, old and new. I, I want to thank our, our previous council member, Dan Albert, for running a very good campaign. I think it created a really good dialogue within our community that doesn't end here. But I appreciate him for the service over the last four years with me on the council and going through this campaign, his long, his family's long history of public service. It really just humbles me greater because I recognize how important the work is that him and his family have done in the community. So it's just been a great honor. And then finally, I want to appreciate our city staff. Because you all have to deal with us coming in and out of office while you're this consistency that keeps the city going. A lot of people come to me and, at MPS and I'm at work and people are like, oh, so when, when are you leaving MPS? And I said, no, I'm not leaving. This is a, a part-time position. Because I think people have this idea that we do a lot more than what we really do. And not to discount the work that we do, I think the decisions, the policy decisions that we make are, are really important. But we couldn't do it without city staff. So Hans, I look forward to working with you. Chrissy, I, I look forward to continuing our work together and all of our city staff. Oh, that's tech, that's technology for you. All of our city staff and, and I, and I, Hans, you taught me not to do this, but I do have one more thank you that I, I want to give. Which is to all of our partners in, in the city. So the business community, I, I look forward to continuing our partnerships as we move forward in our military installation. So ma'am, thank you so much for doing my swearing in and. And as much as I respect you and the work that you've done at the Naval Post Graduate School. I think there's higher symbolism in regards to the need for us to continue to foster those relationships with our military installations within our community, which really is what brought me here. So I, and a lot of the relationships that are, are developed and a lot of the people that live here. So anyways, I'll stop talking. Thank you all so much for being here and I love you all. Thank you. I don't know what I do. All right. So we will go on to public comment. And earlier for Mayor Roberson, there was a, I think a leniency on the three-minute rule. But I will keep this to the three minutes. So if anybody wants to provide public comment, we'll open it up at this time. Oh, and that's for public comment for anything that's not on the agenda.
Okay, my name is Ivan Kidos. Tyler is my partner and Sasha is Tyler Seaman. The, the reason I want to address you guys is just to thank you for all the support that you've been providing, you provide to Tyler for this campaign. And the one thing I want you guys to keep in mind, and actually I have to keep in mind every day, is that when we watch the news and we see how messed up politics could be in the world, we always think we can fix it. We have the solution in our brains, but really how many of us actually go ahead and do something? And Tyler is one, that one person who does it and does it not just because, you know, there is an ulterior motive like, you know, a family of established or you have a business or something that you're going to benefit off. But he's doing it because him, his family gave him this morale or this ethic of work, public work. And I am, they, whenever I'm mad at him because of whatever, I always go back at his work ethic. If he's not around is because he's actually addressing something he really believes in. And he believes in Monterey and we're so fortunate to have him. And now it's kind of, I have to learn to call him mayor, but thank you guys.
Any other public comment in the chamber?
Hello, y'all. Hey, Ryan. I'm not that great at public speaking, but I just want to say that being the youngest of the bunch, I mostly support my brother Tyler. And it hasn't been easy for him. He calls me all the time and we just sit and chat and talk about how he's going to pursue or how he's going to change the route to get to where he needs to go. I used to live back here in twenty eighteen and he was doing the same exact thing, just sitting there motivating people and just being truthful and honest with people. And I think people understand that and they toward a gravitate towards that type of energy that my brother brings. And it's just an honor just to be here and once again, at another major event to see him accomplish what he puts out for himself. And I love you very much.
Love you, Ryan, Ryan.
I'm Terry Williamson. Tyler is our dad. When, I'm real quick, when he was going to school, I always told him, make sure you eat something before every test. Cause you can't study when you got ground bellies. So that was the only thing I always told Tyler, make sure you eat before every test. And then another thing is that when Tyler makes a plan for something, it pans out ROTC, Navy Academy, Councilman, Mayor. And the other day I was talking to him and said, Dad, I'm not finished yet. And I brought tears to my eyes. I know Tyler says something to, in, in his heart, he will do it. And the next thing is sky the limit.
Thanks, Bobs. Okay, do we have anybody online?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you for, thank you for the public comments. I love you guys. So public appearance items, item number four, we're looking at appointing Councilmember Alan Hoffa as the Vice Mayor for twenty twenty-three. So pass it to Clementine.
I left my notes over with City Manager Uslar, but I can tell you that the council has a practice of rotating these seats. And following the past rotation, Councilmember Hoffa would be next in the line. And if that is council's pleasure, they may make that appointment.
Okay. Is there any questions from the council? All right, let's take it.
Comments from the public.
Let's go out to public comment. Anybody in the public wish to comment on this agenda item? Online?
Not online.
All right, bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation and to appoint for January twenty twenty-three Vice Mayor Alan Hoffa.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
Careful what you wish for.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Hi.
And Mayor Williamson.
Yes. Awesome. Vote passes unanimously. Congratulations, soon to be Vice Mayor Hoffa. Okay. And I think we're just going to go to a recess and the council is going to reconvene at seven PM to discuss the, the, review the applications and provide direction, re the council vacancy. So if you all want to join us back for that discussion and we'll have some,
Welcome back to the council session.
Recording in progress.
Welcome back to the council session. Okay, we'll start off by doing the pledge of allegiance and with our newest council member. I'll ask Dr. Kim Barber to start us off here.
I'm glad you're leading.
To the flag of the United States of America. In tender republic for which it stands. Our nation under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and go to consent. Or do we have to do public comment?
We have the consent items agendas before the public comment.
Oh, okay, perfect. All right, so we'll go ahead and go to the consent. No items currently known to be pulled from the consent. So are there any public comments on consent? And anything online?
Not online, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, does council want to pull anything? Nope. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Barber.
Aye.
And Mayor Williamson.
Yes. Perfect, okay, we'll adjourn to consent of the Ocean View Community Services District. There's not currently any known items to be pulled on this agenda. Are there any public comments? Anything online? Oh, we do have a comment in the chambers.
Hello, welcome new mayor. Congratulations on your win and nice to meet you as well. Just a quick update on Ocean View Plaza. The, which I call Canary Road Plaza. We have final appellate court arguments in January. So expectation is in February, we should have a final ruling on that. And we expect we'll be able to move forward with that. And we'll then continue with the suit which we have against the Coastal Commission, which we feel might be easier once we get past this final ruling in February. Thank you.
Thanks, bud. Okay, anybody online?
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome. So no vote is needed. We're just here to receive a report today. So we'll adjourn back to the council and we'll continue public comment for non-agendized items. Those in the public that wish to speak can do so for up to three minutes for items that are not on the agenda. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak this time? Ready? And online?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor, no hands raised.
So we'll be looking at reviewing applications and provide direction on the council vacancy. So am I passing it to Clemente in here or am I passing it to you, Mr. Mayor or city manager? I'm upgrading you.
Thank you, Mayor Williamson. I will give a brief staff presentation and then give it back to you, the mayor, to start the process then. We have a council vacancy in front of us that was caused by the runoff or the elections between council member Williamson and council member Albert at that time. Councilmember Dan Albert vacated a seat at large. This is the seat right now that is vacated and there are two more years left on this seat. On November ninth, the seat was vacated, that was the day after the election in accordance with our charter regulations. And the city issued a call for applications. We have received twenty, we have provided twenty application packets to interested residents. We received a total of twelve applications by the deadline with twenty or more voter signatures. Eleven of those application packages were deemed as complete and verified by the Monterey County Elections Office. In front of you tonight is basically now the decision to fill this vacancy and to find the right process to fill that vacancy. The city charter requires that the seat has to be filled within forty days after the vacancy occurs. So that is November ninth. By December nineteenth, the council is has the last chance to appoint this at-large, short-term city council seat. Should the council not come to a determination by December nineteenth, who they would like to put into that seat? Then the charter provides that the mayor then has the authority to appoint the at-large, short-term city council seat. So that's the process. You all will remember when you were still sitting on the previous council that we decided to bring this process immediately forward. And again, on we the city delivered, so to speak, with eleven packages that are in front of you. And now it's up to you, the council, to figure out how you want to look through the various applications and how you want to proceed.
Okay, perfect, so I'll just start off. Counsel with sharing that I have no intention of of making a decision by myself. If we need more time to have that discussion, then I'd like to permit that. My hope is though, is that we can get to a decision and have the council vote by the nineteenth. And in that being said, I know that we the normal processes that we ask questions and then we go out to the public. But I'm hoping that we can maybe look at what are we hoping to achieve out of today? So that maybe we can move on with the process and look at what next steps are. And so I'll just start by saying that I feel like there are two options. We can either have the council meet in a special meeting collectively at a soon-to-be-scheduled date and to collectively interview all eleven candidates. Or we can have a subcommittee and it could be something like the mayor and the vice mayor. And we can interview, it could be a public session. And that way, the rest of the council and the public can listen into what that process is like. And then we can come back together as a council and whether it's a second meeting as a council or a follow-up meeting after the subcommittee meets. But that's my thought as far as next steps and not really going into the process tonight of interviewing the applicants. So I'll take input from you all in regards to what next steps look like.
Alan, you want to say anything?
Well, first of all, thank you for introducing the item and sharing your thoughts, Mr. Mayor. I feel like a subcommittee, especially if it's going to have, you know, if it's going to be a publicly noticed meeting with public comment, I don't think it really adds anything. I think ultimately, all four sitting council members are going to have to work with whoever we end up appointing. I think it's probably better for us just to work it out ourselves if we can. And of course, if we can't, then you ultimately will get to make that decision. So that's kind of my first take on that. I guess one thing I'm not clear on, so are we not going to be hearing from candidates in the public? And potentially making a decision tonight? Or is that def- is this definitely more just about process? I'm not sure if that's for you or if that's for the city manager. If I could get a little clarity on that.
So, so my, my, my hope is that we can just discuss process and next steps and not really go in. Because I imagine that we could be here for several hours. And I think having something specifically set up where it's clear and everybody in the public understands the intent of what the process looks like, I think would be helpful. I think it's been a little bit ambiguous for all of us and the public in regards to exactly what it is that we're even coming here for today. So I think having a clear structured process after tonight would be helpful, but it's really at the discretion of the council to decide what we want to do tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I actually agree with that. I think that, you know, we want to make sure it's fair to everybody. So all the applicants have a chance to prepare and know exactly what to expect as opposed to just coming up with it at this point. I think if we do the process of what the process is going to look like to tonight, then we can go from there. Maybe get the subcommittee to have a rubric so that the public will know what the rubric looks like and what it is. And so that it's equitable and transparent.
So I think there's a couple of things in the process. I think I concur with Alan in terms of a subcommittee. One of the things that a subcommittee always is it's useful for is when there's details, collaborations, some extensive study towards a task. So it saves the larger body to have to go through that. But one of the things I'm struck with on page eighty-seven of the packet, where it's talking about potential reviews and process. If the ad hoc committee holds meetings that are open to the public, other members of the city council would not be able to attend. So I think for me, it seems like there is no more value that's added when there is a subcommittee. It seems like we ought to move towards advising the applicants, and I think they're all here, advising the applicants of the date. And on that date, then the whole council together works and as long as it takes, we establish, let's say, three minutes of them introducing themselves and then questions. There's eleven of them, maybe that's ten minutes for each of the eleven. If we spend two hours getting to meet the eleven and hear from them, then I think I would be much more in a position to say which one I'm inclined to recommend. So I just think a subcommittee doesn't add anything for me. I think pushing this to the twentieth or a special meeting where we accomplish that between now and the twentieth, where we are giving adequate time, and I'd say ten minutes or so for each of the candidates, for us to interact with them in an open session in a special city council meeting or a regular city council meeting. To me, seems like it serves the purpose of, of being able to vet and get to know the candidate in the confines of the whole council, you know, working. Now, if it was going to be a special meeting other than the twentieth, it's a question for the city manager. If you could highlight what a special meeting date would look like and the statutory requirement. And then what the twentieth would look like? And is there any other pending business, business scheduled for the twentieth that would interfere with us potentially taking three hours on a process of eleven applicants?
So thank you, councilmember Smith. The twentieth is a regular scheduled council meeting that agenda is packed. So we have a very busy agenda on the twentieth. You could hold a special meeting anytime between today and the twentieth. We could meet next week, Monday. If that is something that you like to consider. We can also meet after that, two, three days later, again, if you want to have another round of discussions. So the twentieth is not a good date. I wanted to say that because we have a packed council agenda. We kept the agenda light for today. Slide as it can be. But there are a lot of items on there that we have to bring forward on the twentieth, including appointing for boards and commissions and other routine items.
Point of clarification. Did you with the forty days that you said that we have, you said that was December nineteenth?
That, that the council's per charter authority to have a word into that expires by December nineteenth. Yes, the mayor just indicated though, that he would be willing to listen to the council, if I understood this correctly, Mayor Williamson. Beyond this deadline, but he would still make ultimately then the decision, the appointment. But as a council, as a body, as of the council, you have till December nineteenth to make that decision.
That's why I would think it would be better to, if we could meet next, next week would be better.
Yeah, yeah, I think a special meeting would be in order and I'd be in favor of special meeting. Yeah.
I would also be in favor of a special meeting next week.
Okay, so and I just want to clarify one thing. The only reason why I was possibly suggesting a subcommittee is not that it would be anything different as far as public comments or input was just that if scheduling became an issue, it would allow us to help expedite that process as far as not getting our calendars in the way of trying to get things through to the nineteenth. And then I'm not sure what things look like as far as maybe trying to schedule two meetings, just in case. If we don't get a decision in that first meeting, that we just have something kind of in the books at least scheduled so that we can be prepared for what that looks like. Because I'm not sure if in that meeting, what do we do? Maybe narrow it down and then maybe we can have a subsequent meeting. So it sounds like we're moving in the direction of having the whole council though. So any other questions, thoughts?
So I just want to connect the strands. I think it's a good idea to tonight, we pick a date so that our applicants know. And then a second date as a possibility, if we go through that first date. I mean, let me just pick the twelfth because it's a Monday. Let's say we go through a process with the whole council on the twelfth. And we spend three hours. And then we decide, okay, so we, we need to think on this and go home, sleep on it. And then come back to another meeting relatively soon that week. Because we have the statutory thing that we should honor and not crowd on the twentieth. So we could hold the first special session on the twelfth and then pick another date that would probably be a much shorter one, which would then we come in and we start making recommendations of those that we have evaluated. And then, then we just start making suggestions of names. So if we did a special meeting as an example on the twelfth, we should put a placeholder tonight as a potential second meeting to go further and then get to the point where we're ready for names to be recommended and actual voting on the particular applicants. Does it, does that sound like what we're thinking?
I, I, I think that's good. Are we wanting to come up tonight with kind of the factors that we're wanting to consider? Or do we want to defer that until the next council meeting? Do we want to try to get some of that out of the way? And I'm not saying we do that at this point. It might be helpful for us to go out into the public to get input in regards to the process. But yeah, is that sound like a general good direction?
I think it, I think it does make sense. I do think we maybe want to hear from the public before we kind of define or describe what our criteria might be. I've also got a question. So councilman Ed talked about like a certain amount of time, which makes sense to me. You know, we may want to talk about, do we want to give everybody, let's say, three minutes to give a presentation? And then maybe we give ourselves a certain amount of time for questions for each one. I think in terms of fairness, you want to kind of make sure that everyone has kind of comparable time, both to present and also for us to interact. But my question to the rest of you is, do we want to, do we want to identify any questions we would ask of all of them? Or do we want to kind of leave it more open-ended? And as somebody who's done interviewing for my job, in terms of fairness, it's more fair to ask everybody the same question. On the other hand, it's also possible somebody might in their presentation say something that might be very important. And that might lead you to want to support them if you could have an answer to a question. So I kind of have mixed feelings on that, but I'm wondering what the rest of you think about that. Do we want to identify certain questions we would ask of all of them? Or do we want to leave it completely open-ended for questions and maybe just set a certain amount of time? Or do we want to have some kind of mix of the two?
Yeah, I think those are all good questions and something to approach. In my mind, I'm thinking, so I've got the packet. I read the packet from the candidates and all great, by the way, and fun to read eleven stories about how you got here. So congratulations on that. I think I'd love to hear from people with like three minutes of, you know, tell us, tell us the why, tell us how you feel like you could connect and help and what you're interested in. But then I think for me, spontaneously, the questions come from basically what I'm given. And I kind of like that the freedom to probe and understand in the moment rather than a structured question that they may, you know, take the question and go home and polish it and practice in the mirror and then come back and we get something canned. I, I just tend to like the in the moment kind of thing, which kind of mirrors what the job is. There's, there's times where we don't have a script and I haven't practiced the agenda. May- maybe sometimes that shows, but I, I just think that if it mirrors more of what the, the business of sitting in the chair of the council is going to be, then we ought to replicate that sort of environment. So I would say adequate time to hear them, adequate time for our council to probe. And also adequate time for them to go further than what they've already given us. So I kind of like the in the moment flavor, rather strict, you know, questions. All the same time, though, I think everybody is entitled to the same amount of time.
So for me, I can appreciate that. I think it's good to do the three-minute presentation and making sure everybody has the same time. And being in the moment, I think is, is great. Because, but I think even in the moment, you can ask for points of clarification about a specific presentation or a specific, you know, piece that they're, they brought up. But I think for more equitable search, because I'm a hiring manager at the university, so I do this as well. We make sure that all of the questions and you don't, they don't get the questions before, so they don't have time to practice and have a canned response.
Yeah.
We have the questions before, so we're the only ones that know, so they're not able to practice anything. So it's still in the moment, but everybody's getting the same questions. And I think that just keeps the process more equitable.
Yeah, I mean, I tend to naturally agree with councilmember Barbara. But because of my role in HR and wanting to keep things equitable. But I also understand the spontaneity too. So maybe we figure this out after public comment. Let's go to the public and see what the input is. And it's anything on this agenda, but I think we're particularly interested in hearing about the structure, the process. And so we'll go ahead and open up public comment and ask you to leave it to three minutes, please.
Hello, Mayor again and city council members, thank you for all your work. I think it's, you know, my seven years I've been involved in Monterey and the six years of living here as a resident full-time, I've been really impressed by the operation of the city council and the staff and how they do things. And what I see is you get along so well up there. You all interact, you know each other, you have respect and you solve problems with from different angles and you come to a resolution. I think the most important thing is that you are all satisfied with who you have to work with. Your judgment obviously is very sound by the quality that the city is in right now from all what we've gone through. We can trust that as a public, as a public, it's more of an interest to see the candidate and start to learn about them and see the choices that are made. But in the end, the decision should be yours, in my opinion. Just I've just really believe you guys have to work together well and someone you're comfortable with is most important. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Marta Craftcheck. And first I would like to say congratulations to Mayor Williamson and the newly elected city council members. I'm really excited. I'm really excited to see new faces representing the city of Monterey. We are fortunate to have so many incredible talented people who applied for the vacant position on our city council. However, there was a clear standout who could hit the ground running, and that is Jean Rash. Jean's experience as president of our Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association and as vice chair of the NCIP committee has given her an understanding of the issues our city faces. Her background as an attorney enables her to see all sides of an issue and work towards the most positive outcome. Having worked with city administrators and elected officials for many years, Jean understands the concerns and the constraints of Monterey. Jean has been involved in many local issues that impact the city. From cell towers to pickleball, undergrounding to public water. All in efforts to advocate for the betterment of our community as a whole. As a lifelong resident of Monterey, I have seen the city embrace many visions of the future and work to make them a reality. The windows on the bay, the sports center and even the tunnel. Though that was commonly derided as Minnie's Hole at the time. As we move forward, we need people with visions, enthusiasm and dedication to work for the benefit of all residents of our city. Currently, Monterey has many challenges to confront, including water, housing, traffic. And we need strong thoughtful leadership to accomplish our goals. I encourage you to appoint the most qualified candidate to the vacant council seat, Jean Rash, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kevin Day in Monterey residence. I have participated in two local appointment processes in the last few years. So I can tell you what they did. Monterey Peninsula Unified School District in February twenty twenty had a vacancy. And there were nine applicants. And what they did was they quarantined everybody in a room, randomly picked the order they were to go into. And each, somebody would come into the room, bring, bring the person out and you wouldn't see them again. So nobody would get to hear in advance what the questions were and everybody had to be honest that they didn't use their so, social media or, you know, texts to figure out what they were doing. So after the nine were done, they were all out there and then the board did a vote, they had a split vote on that. Then they did a second vote to ensure that the person was unanimous, to set aside divisiveness, et cetera. That's how they did it. And then January twenty twenty one, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District did an appointment. And in that case, had to be Zoom because they were meeting virtually completely. And they just had each person there and they went down the list and they, each person gave a three minute statement. They asked some questions of various people and different people got different questions and then they made their decision. So that's how those two local governments did it. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lauren Nagel and I'm an approved applicant from District Four, which is the one district that's not currently represented on the council. Kim from District One, Ed Smith from District Two, Alan from District Three. No one from District Four. And as the president of the Del Monte Beach Neighborhood Association, I can tell you that it's always been something I've heard there's a fair amount of resentment about. That we don't have anybody ever from our district. We checked with the city clerk and, and she told us that there, that going back through the records, there hadn't been anyone since nineteen seventy five. Congratulations to, to the new members of the council and those of you just, just sworn. And I would like to compliment the last council and mayor for making the redistricting, the districting decision. I think it's a step forward that I hope will lead to more diversity, representation. And I think it's, it's, it's important to represent the city as a whole, but I think you do a better job of that when you know what the particulars are for your area. So I hope you will, there are three candidates from District Four who've been approved and I hope you will select from among those candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dan Presser and I got my hat in the ring too. But I have something I'd like to toss out at you guys. And that is that when you interview the candidates, that you do it without any of the other candidates in the room. Because if they're sitting in the room, they can pick up on what the person being interviewed ahead of them is saying. And they could probably pick up some things that you are saying that they should include in what they have to say. So to make it more equitable, it might be better to interview each of the candidates one at a time. And that's an idea I'm tossing out at you. Thank you.
Anybody else from the chamber? All right, how about online?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor, there was a hand raised earlier, so I would just say, oh, here we go, okay, here's a hand. I'm calling on a telephone caller with the last three digits nine zero two. And if anyone else on the Zoom call is signing to speak, please raise your hand. Nine zero two, go ahead, please.
Yes, my name is Nina Beatty. For many years I've watched, I've participated in city council meetings and planning commission meetings and watch city staff and elected officials deal with different issues. This, the changes that are coming in the city are substantial. There is a change to the general plan that's going, that's already in the process of being discussed and public comment being taken. There is the discussion of expansion of military facilities and missions through the regional Monterey Regional Compatible Use Compatibility Use Study, recommendations that will likely be received by the city council at the last meeting. It's very important that the public has a right, has the ability to have some interaction as they would with city council candidates that normally come before they come up for a regular election. We don't, as the public, don't have any way of having any contact, ask questions, to interact with individuals, to find out their, their ideas on different topics. And given the challenges and the big issues that are coming down the pike very shortly, I think the public should have that opportunity to have some sort of way of interacting with these candidates. I'm also alarmed to hear that the last meeting of the year, which is right smack up against Christmas, is going to be crammed in the city manager's words with items. And I'm assuming that one of those items will be the Compatible Use Study, which most of the public doesn't even know exists. So I hope that, I agree with Mr. Presser, that the candidate should not be in the room when other candidates are being interviewed by the council. But I, I think the public needs to know who, which of these candidates, how they would see themselves representing the public. Because conducting the business of the city is only works if the public is the ultimate focus, not special interests. That are typically given a great deal of say in how city visions are made. Thank you.
Thank you, and there are, oh, here we go with the other person whose hand was raised earlier. Calling on Lori Mazuka. Lori, go ahead, please.
I need to click my unmute, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, well, partly because a few folks had, were touching on similar things that I feel the strongly about as well, and that's that, yeah, no other candidates be in the room. So I guess I would third or fourth that, however many people have suggested that. And I do like the idea of, you know, a three minute, I think Ed Smith said, you know, like a three minute talk of why, the whys and the hows and what they can contribute, that would be a nice thing for the public to hear. And then other than that, some separate time without the other candidates around. And what, what another suggestion would be to, you had a quite a nice list of questions that other cities have asked. And maybe the council could know what all those questions are and put some of the top ones that they would want to ask in a hat. And have each candidate pull one and that sort of then gives you the surprise in being in the moment of the, the back and forth. A little more organic conversation. And I was also thinking that as the candidates are already there and someone else mentioned Christmas. And I'd hate to think that some of them might be out of town and have other plans. And I'd like to just know that they could all have an opportunity and not be shut out just because they're going to be leaving town next week. And I also feel like if they are all there, because it was, I couldn't find out, is this the meeting we all want to attend? Should we join, are they going to interview, like, nobody seemed to know or be able to give any direction of what was going on in this meeting. So I feel like if they're all there, it might be nice at least to have the introduction to the public that are here and all those candidates, if in fact they are all there. If they're not all there, then that wouldn't be fair. But that, that's all I have to say at this moment. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else online?
Yes, we do, we have someone whose last three digits on the phone are two zero four. Telephone caller, go ahead, please.
Yes, good evening, Tom Rowley from Fisherman's Flats Neighborhood, which happens to be in District Two. It's very clear that everybody that's tuned in, that's watching the meeting at home tonight would like to see all the candidates make some remarks. And the other thing is, you need to give the same type of opportunity for each of the candidates. I would hope that any candidate is a serious candidate, whether they followed the city or whatever, plans to be in town between now and the time of selection. The fact that somebody may have some plans to go out of town, I really think is not really a good excuse. Also, experience with what's going on in the city. Many of these people, and I watch a lot, either watch or attend all the city council meetings. Many of these people have never attended or participated in any way, shape or form at either Planning Commission or ARC or HPC or at the city council. And so this is very important that we get the chance to see these people speak. Because one of the things is the communication with the other members of the council that their, their ability to express ideas and understand and give some knowledge of what they know about what's going on. Obviously, somebody like Jean Rash, yes, she's had a lot of experience because she's on the NCIP. But many of the others have not had the intensive experience that she's had. So I don't think that that necessarily means that the other people are less qualified. It means that perhaps she's more qualified. So I would again, offer and suggest that each of the individuals be given adequate opportunity so that all four members of the council are confident that you understand where these people are coming from and what their goals are, long range goals are. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I do not see any further hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks Clementine, I think we have one more in the chamber.
Thank you. Mayor Tylerson. My name is Luis Osorio, former DRC member, former planning commissioner. I'm here to offer congratulations to the former mayor and the former city council member, Dan Albert. For Clyde to have been in office and to have dedicated all these years to the, to the council, it's an amazing feast. Even though at times it seemed like we were going in different directions. You tend to develop a, or you actually develop a sense of admiration. I also want to congratulate Mayor Tylerson and the new council member. I think it's interesting time for the city of Monterey in just the look of the city council. I think the new members are going to bring up a different, a much needed, different perspective to city politics. Just because of who they are and who, and what they look like. And, and I think that's great. There is a lot of an undercurrent in the community about the needs of the minorities that I think have not taken, have not been taken very seriously by the former, by the majority of the former city council. There's the issue of housing, where there has been comments about, you know, affordable housing not being needed in the city of corrupting neighborhoods. And I think that is the going, is going to be the issue that is going to determine how you succeed or not. Because housing is not just here, you all, you all know very well, the housing crisis throughout the, the country. And I think there has to be a lot of creativity and a lot of different kinds of thinking and about the economics and all of that. So I just want to offer my congratulations again and let you know that I'll continue to be around like I've been around for the last thirty years. And like Tom Rowley said, I'm one of the persons that have been here in and out. And I look forward to interacting with, with you and whoever the new majority is going to be. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the chambers? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for deliberation.
I thought. Thank you for the public comments. So I want to highlight part of the staff work provided with four questions plus attachments thirteen and fourteen for reference for council members and the public to be able to review some information that come from other California cities that have gone through similar processes. So I think if we're looking for some standardization of questions that we feel that we might want to tackle. One of the things that we might want to do is before we get into the questions, that we get those questions up and we identify a few of those questions. And those are questions that all the candidates get. That's one suggestion. To give it a little bit more form and structure where it's consistent and we have the questions. I think that the questions are available for us in the staff report. So we could select a few of those questions as a council. Another thing that we heard from the members of the public was a suggestion that the candidates are interviewed in public but separate and other applicants are not in the room at the same time. So I think that's a good suggestion. I kind of like that feel. I think everybody wants to know what the candidate's going to say. But I think in all fairness, the person that goes last is probably in a good spot. And I think in all fairness, we should have each candidate by themselves and then bring, bring them in after they're done.
I, I know that you said earlier about having canned responses and, and, and it's a little bit of a different thought now, but I almost like it. Because, you know, the other side of this is being prepared. And if you're given questions in advance and you don't come to the interview with the responses, you know, well thought out, then, you know, you were given that opportunity. So there's another way of looking at that and I appreciate that input. I do just want to pass it to Chrissy, I want to ask, because there is this idea by, spoken by a couple of folks in the public around kind of cornering off some candidates and interviewing them one at a time. And what does that look like as far as what we're allowed to do?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Williamson. It's a very understandable idea brought up by the public. And unfortunately, we won't be able to accommodate that because the Brown Act does not allow us to exclude people from a public meeting. And we can't ask people to be excluded from a public meeting. So what might have been happening in some of these other appointment processes is maybe it was an appointment of someone similar to the city manager or the city attorney where you can meet in a closed session and, you know, not have it be such a public process, but it's distinct here. So unfortunately, the Brown Act won't allow us to ask people to not come in.
Thank you for that. I, I think that it, it leads me to favor your first point in that if we just give the questions to everybody in advance.
There's no advantage.
There, everybody has equal footing, whether you go first or last. So it's something for us to think about.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I, I was also intrigued by the idea of, of sequestering people. But it sounds like that answer is no. I do think if we identify some questions that all of them will answer, then first or last doesn't really matter. So I do kind of like that. I still would like to have the ability for us to ask follow-up questions. And that adds that element of, you know, the ability to probe and clarify. I did have a question though. Somebody had mentioned that, I think it might have been Tom. If all of the candidates are here, could we give them all the opportunity to speak for three minutes tonight? I think it might be helpful, even if we're not making the decision tonight, also for the public. You know, as Nina Beatty said, the public doesn't know any of these candidates, or they may know some, but they don't know all of them. Neither do we. We know some, we don't know all of them. Might be nice to give them the chance to just make a statement tonight. I don't know. I don't know if that's permissible.
Are, are all of them here?
I don't know. Yeah. So that would be one question for staff. Do we know if all of the candidates are here?
I know of at least one who reached out and said they were unable to make this meeting.
Okay, well, given that, then I don't think we can do that. So we'll pick a meeting date and then they'll all know that and they'll know that they'll have the chance to speak that night. Yeah.
City manager.
So I, I want to add my one cent into that. Which is you could also select an array of questions. Let's say you take 10 questions. And then you ask randomly two or three questions after an opening statement of three minutes. That way candidates have to be prepared for that. And you, you have an option of floating around. If somebody talks in his opening, in his opening statement about a certain topic, you might have questioned that, that is a, is a canned question. But with that, you keep it alive and well. Then presser spoke about, it's not so good to hear other answers and then float around. You can mix it up. And I, I, I believe if you have an array of 10, 15 questions or so, council candidates have to be prepared for that and they, they see then also it's not as scripted as, as, as Councilmember Smith was talking about. So just, just a thought on that one. Follow-up questions, Councilmember Barber said are really cool when you have the same questions, but candidates sometimes open themselves up, as you know, for follow-up questions to really, okay, what did you really do in this project? And, and that is also fair and shows gives you insights of that. So that works as well. If you have three or four canned question, keep, keep it structured, but allow follow-on questions to really drill down and, and, and see what they can deliver. So anyways, that's what I wanted to say.
So I'm thinking, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So I was just sitting up here thinking like when we were at forums, Ed, you remember when we went forums? We, you know, we basically all had the same questions. And we still had to answer and we listened to everybody else in there. So it's no different. So to me, it's like, you know, yeah, I mean, you know, you, you could, you know, you still have the same questions, which it makes it equitable. And even if you, even if you ask the same questions to the same people and it feels like it's canned, but really it's still coming from whoever they are. And, and, and we, we had the same thing. We had the same questions that we answered, but it brought out who we were. So I, I think you're kind of having the, kind of the same concept.
Yeah, kind of comes with the turf.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, is that idea, just to clarify, is that idea not giving the questions in advance? Or is that in the line with giving the questions in advance? In advance, okay.
But because in some forums, we had the questions in advance. But in most forums, I can speak for myself, we didn't have a question in advance. So you have to be prepared either way. So I mean, either one, either way it worked, but I think in this case, having them.
But I think in this case, having, having them in advance would be fair since it's an application process.
So one thought is there are four questions in the staff report as suggestions, and then there's more questions on page, addendum 13 and 14. Now, I didn't print out 14, 13 and 14. But those are questions, it seems like, well, what would happen if we sent all those questions to the applicants? And then because we can't go through 25 questions, we, we then are picking some of those questions that are relevant to, to what we want to hear. But they get all of the same questions, so they know all the possible same questions. No secrets, totally transparent. They've got those questions and know that the council may or may not ask, ask those questions. Likely many of those questions will be asked. Probably each one of the applicants is going to get two or three of those questions and they're going to get some follow-up questions.
So this is what I would maybe suggest, or I'm trying to summarize where we're going with this. Sounds like three-minute introductory statement. I would propose maybe limiting each council member to asking one follow-up question.
Yeah.
And then the response be given one minute, and that takes us to about eight minutes.
Yeah.
Per candidate, and that sounds about a good amount of time. And then we just leave it to that. And then maybe we could ask staff to randomize a list and provide that to me for the next council meeting. So that way we have a random list that we didn't have any influence on. I'm not sure if I'm missing anything.
Random list of candidates.
Random list of candidates. In terms of the order, exactly, exactly. And then as far as the questions, I, I would just like to throw a few thoughts, ideas, and I don't know how, I read through the questions in the packet, but I don't know how these align or interact with what already exists there. So I have some thoughts. And again, these might already be there, but just to make sure that they're included in whatever list that we may ultimately provide to all the candidates. I think it's important that we look at, and this was brought up during public comment, somebody that has the ability to work effectively on a team. I think that's pretty important. I think giving some weight towards, you know, people that live in a district without a district representative, I think is, is a helpful thing to consider. I don't know how that goes into a question per se, but and then I think just kind of looking at where our strategic direction has been, at least from this previous council in regards to the direction that this council is wanting to take. So I know that we haven't had a discuss, a strategic discussion yet as a council, and it would be great to wait until the vacancy is filled. But we've had strategic discussions and I think there's some general understanding of the direction that the city is going in. And so making sure that we have a subset of questions in there that get an understanding of where the candidates align and, and, or seeing where they fit in with the, the strategy that we've already developed as a council.
So why don't we provide the value drivers to the applicants along with questions? And that matrix that we have in terms of the city council priorities. Remind me, were there 90 council priorities on that list?
So I think there was over.
But the, yeah.
Well, they were, they were, they were priorities that we considered. But it seems like the council candidates could get that. And, and then if they got all the questions that are suggested here, that might link what you're talking about.
Hundred percent. Okay. So I think we have some general direction here. And I'm not sure if this would be too much to ask, but can we just generally look at our calendars and make sure that everybody is good for two meetings next week? Like, is Monday and?
I think we should.
Does Monday and Wednesday look well for everybody?
Let's look.
Is planning question next week?
Monday looks good.
Is someone speaking?
Hi Clementine, it's me, sorry.
Oh, hi.
I forgot to push the, push the button. The fire department noticed as well. So Monday, the 12th is, is possible start time, 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM. What, what's the pleasure of the council?
I would suggest 6:00 PM so that way we don't go into the evening.
Well, that way we don't take a dinner break and.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, 6:00 PM on Monday next week.
And I'd ask, and I'd ask staff to take a dinner break before we go to the council meetings. I know you guys are going to be working up until then.
Yes. And then we are not sure about Wednesday, the chamber is available.
Wednesday, the chamber is available, but there is a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. And they expect to adjourn by seven. So we would advise not to start until seven o'clock at the earliest.
Yeah. And if, if you ask me for my preference, I would say it would be better on Thursday because we have to re-rig the, the, the chamber and get it all done. If, if Thursday would work, that is fine. Otherwise, we can make it happen on Wednesday as well, but it would be a little.
And Thursday is a Board of Library Trustees meeting as well, but
Six though.
But they could end by six, six thirty.
And again, it's a question of having AMP and YouTube and all those channels ready. That's why, why that's important.
Is there any limitations with?
So I have a conflict on both the days, but the easier to get out of is the 14th, the 15th is a little more dicey for me.
Okay.
Microphone, please. I'm sorry. The 12th and the 15th work for me, but it's the six o'clock time for both of those.
Okay. Is it possible, Ed, for, for you to be able to make the 15th work? It sounds like, it sounds like there might be a little bit more wiggle room on your side than, than Kim's.
Yeah, I'll just tell somebody and a group that it's not going to work and they'll cry and they'll deal with it.
And, and we may not even need it. If we end up coming to a decision on Monday night, it's great, but just so that we can all have something prepared walking away and for all the candidates to be prepared as well for that.
And whatever, whatever it takes to get the job done. We're ready. And I think we might be able to get where we need to be on the 12th.
Perfect. Yep, hybrid is still an option.
On the 12th.
Is it fair for me to ask if there's any questions from the candidates? Is that opening it up to the general public or is, is there?
You could reopen public comment, and then if anyone wants to come up and speak, they could, but that'd be for everybody's.
Okay.
So it might be helpful for us to just run down what we just established that we want to do, like the meeting, what the process is. Because we're not doing it with emotion, but I mean.
Hans, can I have you do that just to make sure that it's being translated well for all of us?
I, I was afraid you would say.
We love to put it me in. Oh, I, real quick, I see Clementine's hands up.
Yes, I just wanted to double check for both of your meetings. I know you said that the second one is tentative, but with the second one, since we'll need to communicate to the applicants, would they be being asked to come to both or just the 12th?
I'd say, I'd say both.
You may not need.
So the second one.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, so I, I understand the council is, would like to have a three-minute presentation by the, by the candidates to talk about why they are feeling they need to apply as a candidate for the city of Monterey and anything else that is worthwhile presenting to you. Then the council would like every council member wants to ask one question. Answer maximum one minute per, per applicant's response time. Those questions are what I understand, the, the questions that we have in here that you like that. But also Mayor Williamson spoke about, he likes to know that they can work efficiently on a team. So that's maybe a question we have to.
Modify.
Modify or, or bring it into that mix of those four, four questions. And Councilmember Smith spoke about our mission and value drivers and our.
Matrix of priorities.
And priorities and have them review those and be prepared to understand also what the strategic direction is so that if you have follow-up questions or a question about that, the candidates know a little bit more than, than usual about.
Or that, that would be one of the, one of the pre-prepared questions would speak to that, huh? Something like, you know, asking them to identify which of the value drivers they prioritize or to speak to what part of the, the value drivers and the mission they, they can support, or if they have ideas on how they would like to see it modified, something like that.
I like it.
And last but not least, there was an element that, that Mayor Williamson spoke about when he spoke about give weights to a district where no representation is present. That's more not for the applicants, for the, for the council to weigh when you into the second phase, but I just wanted to beautifully report that.
And then, and then staff will provide a randomized list so that we can use to determine the order.
There was one other thing that I think got sort of lost in the translation was that we, we were going to have a council question. Okay, so that's assuming that then there's five questions.
That's right.
Right? On the front load, there was three minutes for the candidate. But we had talked about follow-up questions. So a council member can only do one follow-up.
That's correct.
So one follow-up per council member along with one question per council member. Did I have that right?
Oh, no, I was thinking one question. Because that could, I mean, we're looking at 13, I mean, I don't, I don't know, we're pushing time and, and I, and I want to allow time. It's up to you all, what you all think is best. I was thinking one question per council member as a follow-up.
Mm-hmm. So no follow-up to that question. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, in terms of time, it's about eight minutes versus 12 minutes per candidate, and we have 11 candidates. Math, who can do the math on that? 11 times 13?
Eight versus 13.
Okay, so.
Thirty-one. One thirty-one minutes.
That's a whole extra hour, basically.
So I'm just, I want to know where does the follow-up question come from? Your follow-up then is only of their three minutes. If you're saying
How about I?
We get a question.
How about I offer this? Maybe it's, you choose whether you want to do a follow-up to something they stated in their interview, or you can ask one of the generic questions that are included in the packet.
Okay. I'm thinking of a menu. I, I like to have it all. Yeah, that, that works for me because if there's five questions possible among the five of us.
We'll get to those things.
I'm going to get to that and I can say, okay, the four of you had a question, now I've got follow-up. So are we going to have rules that say I can ask a follow-up? But I don't want to run out because that candidate might be 75% done with that, but then it's time. So I, I think in all fairness, we need to be judicious about questions are great. A follow-up might be very meaningful to the heart of the matter, but I don't want to see that follow-up question, and then there's not enough time for the candidate and we're at 10 minutes.
You, you will also consume time with your follow-up question. Keep that in mind.
This is true.
That's true. So is there going to be a master clock somewhere where we're watching?
Yes.
Okay.
Clementine's very good with that clock, I even noticed.
I'm, I'm big surprise here. I'm good with rules. I just need to know how we're managing our clock and I can work through it. That sounds fine. Perfect. Alan?
I'm just doing the math.
Trying to figure out how long it would take us either way.
So if we have 11 and it's 10 minutes? Hundred and eleven minutes?
Two hours.
Two hours, and then we're going to have discussion.
For another hour.
And we got public comment. We have no idea how long, that could be half an hour, it could be two hours.
So if we start at six and we get done at 10, four hours, I think we're, that's a winner.
True, I agree.
I think we're looking.
And on the other hand, we don't want, this is an important decision. It's hugely important. So we definitely don't want to sort, change ourselves. I, I think we probably would have enough time if we allowed one follow-up per person. And again, one minute response to that follow-up. Not everybody will take a full minute either.
Yeah. Yeah.
What do you think?
Yes. So from a time management point of view. Yes, uh, I, so from a time management point of view, I, I think it makes sense to power through, so to speak. Uh, but you can give each candidate, uh, a minute for, for the question and for the follow-up also a minute. So keep, keep them to a minute, you, you take your own time. Uh, but, uh, the, 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 the clock rings after sixty seconds and, and the candidate stops and you ask a follow-on question. There may be also candidates, probably not in this room, but where you don't want to ask a follow-on question anymore. And where, where you have your, your, made up your mind already.
Right.
So, uh, again, um.
That's true, we may not all want to ask a follow-up question of every candidate.
Yes, and maybe crystal clear that this answer is, 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 is okay or perfect. So the point that I try to make is, um, keep the candidates to, to the regiment of three minutes, one minute per answer. And then also, uh, I would suggest also work that Monday till we have all candidates vetted, and then you decide what the next steps are.
Yeah, and, and we've done the candidate forums, and some of them is, we, we got sixty seconds. Tell us about yourself in sixty seconds, those are hard.
Yeah.
Sixty seconds is not enough. Three minutes is sometimes more than you really need, because we already see, you know, a lot of information about them, so we could get more time to the questions if we said two minutes. Tell us about yourself and what do you want us to know?
That's true.
And you could go into the questions and have you, you have more time for the questions. Because we already pretty much have a bio on everybody.
Well, we're taking out a minute there to add five minutes, uh, but I, I think we're getting to, to the nuances here. I, because, because really, I mean, we could say even asking follow-up, we might not get all the information that we need. But I really feel like by all of us being able to have that one minute follow-up question per candidate, we should have a good sense of the direction that we want to go in. I don't think we need to drill this down so far. I, I'll just say one, one last point that we really didn't get to, which is if we do, um, not really fully end on Monday and we have to go to a Thursday. My hope is, is that maybe we can get to a space of maybe chiseling it down and narrowing kind of who those kind of top candidates are, so that maybe it is only a select group that we're bringing to that Thursday discussion, so that we can talk about that deeper.
Is that permissible, City Attorney? Is that something the council could do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if, if we're good with it, um, I'm, I'm fine with two or three, I think three is good, and let them use that. And then we each have our minute, does that seem agreeable to everybody?
Yeah, one other question.
And if they don't use the three, they, they accomplish what they need in their introduction, and they've got more time on the questions.
Where, at what point in this would the public input occur? In my thinking, it would occur after the presentations and our questions, so that the public would have that opportunity to have heard of all that, and then they could speak. And then after that, we close public comment and then we deliberate.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
No. Right.
Yep. Yeah, and then if it's, it's already nine o'clock at that point, then the public, maybe, you know, if there's thirty people from the public that want to speak, maybe that time needs to be down to one minute instead of three minutes. If we got a lot of people at the end of the night. Because then, then what's going to happen? There may be advocacy for their favorite candidate, which is great, but they can do that in less time. And rather than adding.
Focus on the candidates.
You know, a whole nother hour and a half, and we're doing that at nine thirty.
Yeah. I think that's good, and I'm glad that we're bringing this up now, instead of surprising people on the night with the potential of limiting public comment down from the three minutes, so I think that's good. I think we can leave that up to seeing how many people end up showing up to the public comment and figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, it's important that when the council finally does begin to deliberate, that we're not exhausted. Like, it's, again, it's an important decision, you don't want to be doing it at midnight.
And, and to that, um, point, Alan, this is an important decision, and I appreciate everybody bearing through this with us. I feel like we could have maybe discussed this a little bit more when we were initially coming out with it. Um, there's been a lot of input, um, offline in, in, in emails about kind of who, how we should select, whether it's from District Four or whatever that looks like. So, all that said, we're here now and we're trying to figure this out. I do want to take it out to the public, just to see if there's any feedback or input in regards to the process, because this is a, this is a really important decision. So I do want to offer that space, I'll limit it to a minute. So if anybody wants to come up and provide input, unless you feel like we've settled this and we've come up with a good strategy, I'll, I'll open the public comment now. That was good, that was good.
Uh, good evening, uh, council, congratulations, mayor and council members, uh, great seeing you all. Uh, and also staff, good evening, members of the public. My name is Gino Garcia. I'm a proud resident of Monterey District Four. Um, and I just, hopefully I'm not throwing a, a monkey wrench here, um, but I do need some clarity, I think, in preparation for uh, uh, the questions that will be coming up. Um, and by the way, I'm also, um, an applicant for the vacancy. Um, I'm, I'm trying to clarify in my mind, um, if public comment, because that point was raised. Um, if those questions will also be directed at the candidates for our response. So that's, that's my question, thank you.
Thanks, Gino.
May.
A little good.
Council. Def, um, just a quick thought, I didn't hear anything about a structuring of the second meeting as much, and a thought I had was, perhaps we have an open meeting on the first, and we have the three-minute conversation, and the public now hears and gets an understanding of each of the people. In that second meeting, that could be a private meeting, and then we could use the fact that you don't get to hear the previous guy, as I would understand from the city attorney, that it, because it's not public, you could exclude all the candidates and bring them in one at a time. And now you do a deeper dive, and in between that first meeting and second meeting, maybe the public's emailing you with other questions you might ask and giving you ideas. And that helps some of your structuring of time, you're not going in deep for some of these deeper dive questions during the first meeting. The second one can be a lot shorter because you have the certain candidates, you're going to have to certain questions. That's my ideas.
Anybody else in the chamber? How about online, Clementine?
No, no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so in regards to that second point, I'm not sure if that's allowed, and I just passed to the city attorney to see it, what the opportunities are. I'm not sure if the council would even consider that, but if we could have a closed session, um.
It's not even qualification.
Right, right.
Right, there's not a qualifying factor to allow that to occur.
Right, there's no exception under.
Yeah, it's not personal, it's not litigation, you know. No.
Yeah, yeah, we want it to be a transparent process. And then I forgot Gino's question already.
I think it was a, uh, asking about, you know.
Oh.
Responding to public comment, but I don't think.
Yeah, so I think, I think my understanding of it, and I'm open to what the rest of the council thinks, is, um, at that point, it's just the count, uh, the public providing their feedback and input in regards to which candidate they're supporting, or they could also offer, um, feedback or opinions on, on questions. Um, but at that point, I don't, I don't think we would go back to the candidates and ask additional follow-up questions from the public. So I think we would just limit it to what, what the council comes up with.
Yeah, technically, it's an agenda item, so the public has a right to weigh in and make a comment. So we'd be doing this after we've heard from all of the candidates. And then we would hear the public, and then there's no interchange, and then we would take the public's information statement, and then we would go into whatever process we decide.
And, and I would just offer, if there's a member in the public that has a specific question that they feel like is important, they could also send us a, an email and notify staff and, and the council in advance of the meeting. Okay, I think we've exhausted this. I appreciate everybody slugging along here. Do we need a motion, or are we good with kind of general consensus?
No, we're good.
Perfect.
Unless you want to.
All right, thanks again, everybody, and thank you for the candidates that were able to make it out tonight. We look forward to seeing you on Monday night. And with that, we'll go to council comments. Who wants to start us off?
I, I will defer, I don't think I have any council comments I need to share tonight.
Kim? Well, usually at this time, we would report back what we've been doing the last, uh, couple of weeks. But, uh, due to lateness of the hour, everybody's been waiting, many of you did not get enough time for dinner, so I'll say, congratulations to everybody, look forward to working with everybody on this new council. We look forward to hearing from the eleven applicants, so we can, uh, select one, and this is a tough decision because all of the, the folks that we reviewed look great, and, uh, we've only got one seat to fill. We look forward to getting through that process, look forward to, uh, the next meeting, the special meeting. And, uh, other than that, I'll reserve all my other comments for later.
Thank you. I, I do just want to bring up one point that I, uh, forgot to share in the earlier session, which is just recognizing, the diversity that's now on the council, and I'm, I, I suspect that we might see increased diversity potentially by filling the, the vacancy, um, on the council, but it, I, I think it says a lot about our community and, and the citizens in Monterey. I think we're upwards in the sixtieth percentile of, um, having a, a, a white community here, but you have two black council members, um, in this community, and, and you all voted for us or, or by lack of somebody else running, but there's two people representing this community, so I think that's a beautiful thing. And I just am really excited to see, um, what we can do, and I'm feeling positive energy so far off of the direction that we're taking, and, yeah, this is going to be fun, so thank you all for, for being here. I'm going to pass it to Hans for the city manager report.
Yes, and, uh, I have a few items. Uh, I, I, um, was part of, of the bi-weekly business roundtable today. At that time, always, uh, Montage Health is giving us a status report, what's going on in the hospital. Uh, the report was, uh, that the hospital is as full as it ever was. Um, uh, three reasons were given for that. Number one, uh, they have an increased number of flu cases in the hospital. Uh, their COVID station is also filling up again, and they have a lot of kids with respiratory issues in the hospital. And last but not least, also the hospital is, is, um, filled up as well as there's a lot, there are quite a larger number of patients with elective surgery there, which is basically a sign of the year-end. Um, depletion of the funds that, that, that are available, all the deductible is, is fulfilled at this time. So the hospital was, was basically giving us a grim picture of how police full they are. Um, and the words that were used, uh, full as ever before. Um, the other part is, um, moving on. Uh, we will have this weekend, uh, Christmas in the Adobe organized by State Parks and, um, the history. Uh, help me.
Yeah, the Monterey State Park, uh, Historical Association.
Association and the city of Monterey. And then, uh, we are offering during the holiday time, two weeks programming for kids and the sports center recreational programming. If you want to have your kids participate there, also the sports center has a special, uh, effort for next year, uh, where we basically offer a one-year membership with, uh, two months, uh, off, uh, in that. So you buy for, you, you get twelve for the price of ten months. Last but not least, um, our toy drive is in full swing. Um, our fire, five fire stations, uh, are collecting toys, not the fire station at the airport district. And, uh, we ask that people bring a brand-new toy to the fire stations there until twelve fifteen. Thank you.
Beautiful, and with that, everybody have a good e- evening, this meeting is adjourned.